You have the Historical Preservation Board to order. Denise, do you want to go ahead and take a walk?
I will. Board Member Miller.
Sorry, Miller, here.
You're here. And Board Member Field.
Present.
Vice Chair Price.
Here.
Chair Grove.
Here.
Board Member Sprotland.
Present.
So Board Member Lady is here. Board Member Kastner.
I think he's going to be late.
Okay, going to be late. And Board Member Fisher may be absent.
And, yeah, and Bracy is absent.
Yes, and Board Member Bracy is not going to be able to make it tonight.
Okay, great. Okay, does somebody want to move that we approved the minutes? There's no changes.
Show moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We need to vote.
Oh.
We need to vote.
Please use the voting board. Okay. We'll wait for Ted to approve minutes. There you go, okay.
Motion carried.
Okay, yes, the motion carries unanimously.
Okay, do we have anybody for public comment? Did anybody sign up? Thank you. Okay, the first person is Pam Chadbourne. Want to come up to the podium?
Good evening, Historical Preservation Board. I'm Pam Chadbourne, I live a block and a half from here. And I wanted to talk about the items on your agenda for the study session. And thank you for these new ideas for additional work. The future historical and architectural surveys, I think is really exciting. And I think you guys have brought that up. So I'm glad to see it going forward and moving forward with a path of who can do it and what to do. And the building awareness program, a different way to get people engaged. I think that's great. But I wanted to focus on the Littleton Boulevard survey. And it says, "HLI Suggest Ideas For Its Promotion." Now, we haven't seen this yet from the city, but this is a project. It is not something that should be hung on historical preservation. Because the outcome changes the entire area. And I'm going to point to downtown because I live here. And you can see the infill gentrification that's occurring down here. That should not have happened according to our neighborhood plan, but it did. So one thing I'm going to point out is the importance of design standards and guidelines to be strong. We're going to see Littleton mixed use, which blew through the design standards and guidelines. Don't let that happen to Littleton Boulevard. So I think we want to do something there. I think it will have an economic impact, which the city needs to provide to all of us, including you. So it's not just historic value that this project has as its outcome. It will affect the economic prospects along there. It will affect the residents who are nearby. Sometimes in an attacking way is what has happened down here. The people who had affordable housing down here are just being wiped out. Even though we're right by a light rail station. And that never should have happened. So we need the city to provide you and us more information about the economic impact and the impact that's probably likely in the nearby neighborhoods. And how we're going to guide that and how we're going to limit it and make sure it's what we want. So lots more impacts for Historic Littleton Boulevard survey. Let's get a picture of it at a project level. Please ask the city to provide all of us for that vision of the entire project of what's the outcome. We're not necessarily going to do it as a historic district. It may be an economic business or a business district. So let's get that plan or those plan alternatives coming from staff now. Please ask for that because it won't happen overnight. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Pam. Okay, do we have anybody else? Okay, good. Okay, any, we have general business? Nothing? Okay. Then why don't we move to the public hearing? I'm sure you're familiar with the process, but let me go through it once again really quickly. We'll open the public hearing here in just a minute. We'll hear from staff and the board will be able to ask questions of staff. Then we'll hear from the applicant or their representative. And then any public comment. And just like we had with Pam, the public can come up and speak about it. Give name, address, and talk for three minutes. And then the applicant can give any rebuttal, but no new information based on any public comment. Then we'll close the public hearing. Our board will have a motion and a discussion. And then we will end with a motion. And those that are here for that portion of the meeting then can leave. And after that, we have a little bit of comments from the staff. And then we will adjourn and move to the other room for a study session. Okay? All right, so let's go ahead and open the public hearing for HPV Resolution 01-218, the Littleton Mixed Use Modification To COA 170001.
Good evening, I'm Andrea Mina, I'm a planner with the Community Development Department. And this is an application for a certificate of historic appropriateness for the Littleton Mixed Use Project. It's COA 18-0001. And it's located at 2675 West Main Street. And it regards modifications to the approved design. This is a little bit unusual in application in that it amends a previous approval that the board gave. And so I'm going to turn it over to our city attorney, Steve Kemp, for a moment to talk about that.
Members of the board, as Ms. Mina indicated, this is a certificate of appropriateness request that pertains to a property that has already had a certificate of appropriateness issued. A site plan has been approved and development has commenced. So what's before you tonight is not the prior certificate of appropriateness. That is vested, it cannot be amended, it is not on the table. What's on the table is this new request. So it does get a little bit convoluted in the sense of because of the prior certificate, it's easy to try to go back and look at that. You may look at that in sense of whether it provides relevant evidence to you in terms of acting on this request. But the prior certificate of appropriateness is not open for discussion. That has been acted on, it's final. The owner has relied upon it. A site plan has been issued and they have vested rights under Colorado law as it pertains to that first certificate of appropriateness. So the focus really has to be on this request for this, what I would call an amended certificate of appropriateness as compared to the original certificate.
Okay, so Littleton Mixed Use Project. Here's a color rendering of it that you've seen previously with the COA that was approved just about a year ago. And the process for this project, in terms of the planning process, is that tonight there's a public hearing before Historical Preservation Board. And staff is recommending approval on it. And then if it is approved, then there will be an administrative redline process of the approved site development plan to reflect the changes that were approved here. A little bit of background, COA was approved specifically February 22, 2017. And the purpose, as Steve Kemp has said, our city attorney, is to request modifications to windows and entrances. And that is the topic of discussion tonight. Littleton Mixed Use is at the west end of Main Street. You can see the arrow and the label there, "Subject Property." And it is in the Main Street Historic District. As a vacant, well, it's under construction now. So the project description is twofold. First, to add windows to the third story. And that would be on the elevations for the west, south, and the east. And then also to eliminate two sets of double doors at the street level. More specifically, I have included some excerpts here from the plan set to show you up close what those red lines look like on the plan. You can see on the left, there is a redlined area where one of the two double doors would be removed. And on the right, you see how the windows would be added. That is, to the existing grouping of windows that was already approved. Looking again more at these windows, I put some red arrows to kind of direct you to it within the context of the overall elevation. And there are proposed windows on each of the groupings, on either side of it. And so it's literally on three sides of the building, every side, every facade except the front. Now, something about the windows request that has been requested is that the additional windows actually be an option, a second option. So then that gives the developer the ability to either move forward on the original approved window design from February of 2017 or to move forward what's being presented here. The applicant can speak to the reasons for that and why they're desiring that. And then just going back to these double doors. Here are the locations of the two double doors that are proposed to be removed. One's on the west elevation and one's on the south. The south elevation, of course, is the front facade. The applicant can also speak to this about the reason for the need of the elimination of those doors. So for any certificate of appropriateness, there is criteria in the city code. And staff has a full analysis in your staff report. I've pulled out a few items here to go over that are most pertinent to the application. And the first is, is that the board must find that the work is otherwise in conformance with adopted design guidelines. The adopted design guidelines for this subject property is the Downtown Design Standards and Guidelines. And you may know the design guidelines don't speak specifically to numbers of doors or configurations of windows. But there are some things about character in the design guidelines that the staff addressed as part of this, as part of the application. And there are three listed here. The first one is, "The character of the new architecture should complement the existing early 20th century buildings without trying to recreate that area." The second is that "The ground floors of building frontages shall be primarily occupied by pedestrian active uses." And the third is that "Facades that face Main Street shall be designed to be the primary facade." Staff's analysis is that the proposed design, the windows and the modifications to windows and doors, is consistent with these three design standards, as well as the rest of the design standards document. The other criterion I'd like to address is listed on this slide. And that is that when a subject site is within a historic district, the board must find that the proposed work is visually compatible with the development on adjacent properties. And staff finds that the additional windows are consistent with the original design concept in that they will be added to existing window groupings, not a big change. The elimination of double doors at street level will be replaced by storefronts, something very similar in design and should not be anything more than a minor impact to the design. And that both modifications will be visibly compatible with development within the Main Street Historic District, including adjacent buildings. So staff finds that, in compliance with the city code for certificate of appropriateness, that's Section 4614C, that the proposed certificate of historic appropriateness for 2679 West Main Street meets the criteria for approval. Staff recommends approval of HPV Resolution 01-2018, approving the certificate of historic appropriateness for 2679 West Main Street with two conditions. And this goes back to that request that the applicant made for the second option on the windows, to have two options. Staff felt that the second option, rather than having two approvals out there indefinitely, that the second option would be good for a period of one year. The applicant has one year to act on that second alternative. And if not, then the approval reverts to the original approval, which is just the one design that was approved back in 2017. And so second condition of approval is there that we need to have notes on the COA plan set to capture that in the approval document. And that's it for my presentation, and I'll be available for any questions.
Okay, thank you, Andrea. Okay, does the applicant or the representative want to come and present? Or do you have any questions of Andrea before?
I have one.
Yeah, go ahead.
Andrea, this affects three of the elevations, correct? East, north, and west?
Yes, that's right.
Okay. We're going from a four-window configuration to a six-window configuration, correct?
Yes.
Now, would it be possible then to go for one of the sets of windows to be six windows and one to be four, and one to be six again? Or can you mix and match in there? Or is it either/or? Either have three banks or however many of six, or all of those of four?
That's a very good question. The elevation design shows it's all of them. The option is all, just like any other design element that you see on that plan set. It would need to be built as shown on the plan. So the applicant has the option to do all of the proposed windows as option number two or go with the original approval.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question, Andrea. Why do you think that the second option should be available for only one year? What's your thinking on that?
Yes, the staff feels that in terms of administration of approvals, that we don't necessarily want options hanging out there after a project has been complete. The applicant can address this too. I believe the applicant feels that one year is sufficient time for them to make that decision on which direction that they want to go. And once we have the building built, it is what it is. If any changes were to be made in the future, then another certificate of appropriateness would be required at that time.
So, Andrea, we can ask this of the applicant. Is your understanding the applicant wants to do this in anticipation so they don't have to come back when it's short time and they're in the middle of building mode? I mean, they're thinking ahead, right?
They're thinking ahead, and I think they can explain it in detail specifically what they're after.
Any more questions for Andrea?
I just had a question, Andrea. Did the city consulting architect looked at these plans at all, or is that...?
Not this particular COA. We felt that it was minor in nature.
Right, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions now?
Do you want to talk about windows separately from the doors at this point? Or do you want to just handle them all together?
I think we can handle them together unless you...
I just had to, help me understand exactly what you're doing with the doors. Which doors are being removed? The entries are being removed.
Well, actually, let's start with this picture here. It's a little bit blurry. As you look at the south elevation, again, that's the front elevation on Main Street. And you can see that there's storefront there and some illustrative signage. One of the doors, the double doors that would be proposed to be removed is the second from the left. And that will be replaced with storefront. There would still be potentially an option for signage there, as meets the sign code. The second double doors would be over on the west elevation. You turn the corner there. There are two sets of doors right adjacent to each other. And it would be the set of doors that is closest to Main Street.
So let me make sure, okay, so are we still doing doors?
So this is the one that's new. It's the second from the left.
This is the one that was removed.
Oh, okay, so, okay.
That was there in the original.
Okay, and so this is now more like this one?
Currently, they're all double doors.
Oh, okay.
It's, I think the rendering is just a little bit dark in there. So you don't necessarily see that. But currently, each of those base has a double door entrance. And one of those is proposed to be removed on that facade. You can also see it on these elevations up on the screen here. The one on the right shows the exact location on the front. The elevation over on the left side here shows the double door location on the west.
So we have entries, as I'm going from east to west. We have entry, 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 and then the span of windows and entry. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Do we need a reason for removing that set of doors?
Yes, the applicant, I feel it's best that the applicant explain it. There is a technical reason for the request.
Did you have any window questions?
I would like to hear that.
Yeah, well...
And...
Did you have any windows questions for Andrea?
No, I don't have windows questions. I just, you know, still have a question about the entrance, but...
Any other questions for Andrea? Okay, Andrea, thank you. And Denise, do we have any public comment?
Actually, this might be the right time to bring this one up.
Okay.
On the north elevation, the COA that we approved a year ago, and we understand, we're not retrading that one tonight. We're just looking at a new COA application. So just so everybody understands that. There's a wall on the north elevation that has a pitch to it at the top. And on the site development plan and what we're looking at tonight, that wall does not have a pitch. It goes up to full height. And I just wonder, is that part of a COA application? Or is that just staff-level changes that are made?
Yeah, there were a few changes made to the north elevation, the backside of the building. the building during the course of the site development plan. And as you may know, modifications to the rear elevation can be handled administratively by staff.
Okay, so that's not a board level.
Minor in nature. If it were to be significant, the staff does have the option to bring it back to public hearing before the HPPB.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, thank you. Do we have any public comment?
No.
Okay. Oh, we do.
Applicant first.
Applicant presentation first. You're right, applicant first. Why don't we go ahead and hear from the applicant or
Good evening, Chairwoman, Vice Chair, and Board members. Thanks for the opportunity tonight to come and present our request. My name is Josh Rowland. I'm with LAI Design Group. We're at 88 Inverness Circle East in Inglewood, Colorado. Let me pull up my So let me just jump right in and explain why we're here tonight. It's, the reasons are twofold. I'll cover the doors first. You know, the nature of the, the timing of the initial COA is, was well before the SDP and the Site Civil Engineering Design Phase means that not all of the very technical questions and, you know, solutions were, were all figured out at that time. If you'll recall, we were at Planning Commission and got a four-story building approved, came here once, got denied, changed it all real fast, came back and, and approved it the second time. So a lot was changing, and we weren't in kind of the nitty-gritty details at that time. So we were hoping to have doors all the way across, but it's, it's really a matter of fine grading. There's a slight slope to Main Street as it moves from east to west, and there's very specific requirements about ADA accessibility and door thresholds. And since your historic design guidelines also want those building elevations right up against the street, we don't have a lot of flexibility on warping the concrete and making it all work. So through the design process, we figured out that we had to, we had to lose one of those doors because it wouldn't work. The door swings and the, the slope of the concrete from Main Street up to the door face was not feasible. And that's the situation for both of these doors. But we feel like with the consistent precast treatment along the base and the continuation of the storefront windows, that, you know, if you compare the before and after images, you can, if you're looking for it, you can see the difference. If you're not, it just kind of blends right in. We don't feel like the changes we're requesting really change the character or nature of the design in any significant way, and staff, staff agreed with that. The second issue are the windows, and that has come up somewhat recently. We've had a lot of interest in the building from prospective tenants, and one or more have asked for more natural light and more windows. And so we thought, you know, we haven't committed to that yet. We haven't locked in any tenants at this time, but we felt like if somebody was very adamant and willing to negotiate a, you know, a reasonable lease deal that would, you know, incline us to want to do that, we would, we would consider it. But we have to make our decision very soon. We're, as you can tell, we're under construction, and things are moving quickly, and we'll be making this decision, you know, in the next, next month or so. But we haven't made the decision yet, so we would like, like that flexibility to do so if, if, if it works out that way. And just to clarify, we are going to either do all the windows as a, you know, four to a six-pack of windows, or or not any of them. So we're trying to keep it simple and clean from an approval standpoint. To just explain a little more detail and show you some enlargements, these, these exhibits are contained in your packet, but they, they identify on the plan where, where those doors are being removed. You know, one of them, it's the second end from the west side of the front elevation. And previously, we had two pairs of double doors in that storefront configuration, so we're taking one of the sets of double doors out. And I just wanted to share these again because mine are a little more zoomed in, so maybe you can see a little better what, what's going on. It's, it's adding a window on either end of each of the window configurations. The, the metal sun shade gets enlarged in width as well to accommodate those windows. But again, it's just a continuation of the, you know, for the door situation, a continuation of the storefront glass windows and the precast base. And here's the rear elevations and the east elevation. So that's our request tonight. We appreciate your consideration, and I'm here to answer questions if you have any more.
Does anybody have any questions? Nope, I think we're good. Thank you.
Right, thanks.
Now, we see if we have any public comment.
I'm Pam Chadmore, and I still live a block and a half from here. So I wanted to request that copies of the applicant's presentation be posted online, especially the before and after. I think that would have been helpful, and I didn't notice that before and after exactly in the packet. The drawings were there, but it was hard to tell. Also, I wanted to ask if the staff presentations could be labeled a little, little better. You know, in my business, when we pulled up, one of the things that was from a previous approval, we would put "for reference only." It was required, actually, so that there wasn't a confusion about what we were considering. So staff could label the prior drawings with "for reference only" with a prominent date, maybe.
I think they did.
And, well, and that's on one of them. So there's a whole ton of pages there.
Sorry, Pam, I did that for you only.
Oh, okay, all right, sorry. Okay. And so, and also, page numbers on the PDF would be valuable. It would be easier to refer to stuff. This is an ongoing theme with all boards and commissions, so I'm not pointing at anybody in particular, but it, it's easy to do with the software, and it would be easier to talk about. So I'll make a couple of comments off of the applicant's presentation. It's hard to see unless you're looking for it, if you're looking at a drawing. If you're walking along the street, this is going to be very obvious. And the scale of this building, again, is much larger than other buildings near it. So I think the change of this door to windows is going to be pretty obvious if you're on the street. And I'm going to tell you, I just feel a little scanned. So the concept was, you know, it looked like we had five little retail businesses there. And it turns out that really it's a stairwell and lobby access, and then maybe two stores, really, not five. And so I think this changes the nature of downtown. Just showing the outside, I realize that's what Historical Preservation Board does, but boy, I feel scammed, and I feel this gets around the intent of the Design Standards and Guidelines to make it look a certain way. I also wanted to show quickly what this view is from Santa Fe Southbound, this huge scale, and then from Main Street Westbound, if you're coming down Main Street, going toward the mountains, the scale of this building. And the view from the west elevation didn't even show the Carnegie Library, although that's going to be very prominent. When you come down Bowles and you see the Grove up on the hill, and then you see this, it's going to dwarf the Carnegie Library. This shouldn't, this doesn't fit our Design Standards and Guidelines. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Pam. And we don't have anybody else. You can come up and speak if you'd like. And just come and state your name and your address, and you have three minutes.
My name's David Randall, and I was curious about the before and after pictures that he showed there, because it looked like there was quite a difference on the, on the one that looked like it was extending the roof line out closer to Main than what the before picture showed. And I wondered if he could show that again and explain that. I would object to it if it, if it's an extension out that makes it a taller building, appear a taller building. One thing that's worked out well, kind of when they went for a second story or higher story, was the setback of that second or higher stories, so that you didn't get the same tall scale. And I'd like to see that one again, so we could maybe have that explained.
Okay, thank you. Does the applicant want to come and forward and explain?
Yeah, we'd be happy to show that. So we haven't changed anything about roof lines or setbacks. We've followed the, you know, as, as your attorney had said, we, the building's already approved. We're talking about doors and windows tonight. But just to clarify that, I, I will say that those two lower images, I have a new 3D person, and they weren't able to get it exactly right. So the cameras turned a little bit, but nothing, nothing's changed. It's just a camera angle.
Okay, so it's, it's, it's the same...
It's the exact same.
COA that's approved.
We're only changing windows and doors.
Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go ahead and...
Now that he's shown that...
I don't know, we can do that.
I'm sorry, sir, you're not able to speak again.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Dave.
Okay, then I object to the, to the approval.
Dave, I'm sorry.
Sorry, sir.
Okay, so we've heard from the applicant, and so we'll go ahead and close a public hearing. And we can have our motion and discussion, and we can ask the staff for any other questions. So would somebody like to go ahead and make a motion, and then we can discuss it? Remember that we can always amend the motion, change the motion, withdraw the motion, make a new motion. So it's just a matter of starting the process.
Pam, I'll move to approve HPPB resolution number 01-2018 approving the certificate of historic appropriateness for 2679 West Main Street, Littleton mixed use, with no conditions.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second, second.
Okay. Let's have our discussion. Do we have any questions or thoughts about the approval? Do we, do you agree with the approval?
Uh...
Are there any conditions?
I'll, I'll chime in.
Okay.
I think it's actually an improvement. Adding, you know, adding windows to that upper story will help to sort of reduce its, sort of the mass, massiveness of the wall. So having a little bit more transparency and more windows, I believe, will actually help with the proportions of the wall on all the sides that they're proposing to increase the window sizes. I also think that it's, it's probably a good thing, you know, to make that space as, or to make the building as, as successful as possible. And being able to, you know, have great windows will hopefully attract great tenants and keep Littleton vibrant and lively.
Light is always a good thing.
Just to add on to that, Dan, I, I agree that I think it helps make that a little bit of a lighter overall appearance, but also still maintains the, the rhythm that's already established by the second floor. So I don't think it, it conflicts with what was already kind of setting that design kind of language.
I also just will say, appreciate the, having to sort of dig into the details a little bit more and understanding why those doors were being removed. I, I thought maybe it was just because of a tenant, but if it really, sounds like it really is due to a, a real issue, and that's accessibility.
Structural issue, yeah.
So I think that's, I think that's valid.
I just, I, I agree with the, the windows on the upper story for all of the reasons that we've just talked about. And just regarding the doors, I just have a, a comment on doors. Our downtown, our historic downtown, is a pedestrian-oriented streetscape. And pedestrians engage with entrances. They don't necessarily engage with blank facades, even if the blank facades contain windows. So I'm always in favor of doors, and I'm, I'm sorry to lose the doors, but I, I do understand the explanation that was given.
I agree. I don't think there's...
We shouldn't be in the habit of losing doors, though.
I think you're right.
Well, I guess I would, I would counter that, that having too many doors can also be confusing. So are these doors locked? Am I trying to opening the door, opening the doors? Is there signage above it? So it's kind of an, it's kind of honest when you see a door and you can walk up to and open it, rather than it being like, oh, I gotta go down. I think it's, it's not uncommon, walking down Main Street, to see other storefronts, even in the historic buildings, that they may just have windows and not have a door. So I, I don't see that as being a problem.
That's interesting. I was thinking about that, and I actually walked Main Street. And it's surprising, most of the, the storefronts do have doors, and they're actually functional. Either they go upstairs to office space, or they, they go into a retail space. More, more of them than not. And, and until you get up way into the east part, when, and I agree, fake doors, no good. But real doors, we should always be encouraged to have, have entrances and encourage a, a real pedestrian landscape. So that's all, all I have.
I think that happens sometimes in a mall where they, one establishment takes over two establishments, and then they close off one door, and they want you to go in the one, and that's when you get in that situation. Yeah, you're constantly going that door.
Yeah, losing that door on Main Street elevation only, I mean, it only got 32 feet between the third door and the last door. So it's really not a very long way.
It isn't. And actually, it, it, it kind of creates a, more of a sense of symmetry without the, the entrance there. So I, I think it's fine, but, you know, just for the record, I like doors.
Do we know how many retail outlets are in there? Is it clear? Is there five retail outlets for the five...
I believe there's two tenants, at least what I saw on the plan.
Do you know, Andrea, if it's divided up into five for five doors, or is it not worked that way?
Well, the applicant may know better. It may be possible, depending on the tenant, to combine spaces or not. But I think that there are, well, why don't you answer it?
We don't know yet.
Oh, so we don't know if there's five, or three, or two, or what, at this point? So there's no walls in between? So we could have a situation where one tenant had two doors?
And it, I mean, this could be retail space. It, it could be commercial space. It could be, you know, an office space. We have one of those downtown where you walk past the office and you see the people working on their computers in their bedroom slippers.
It's ideally, and this is not, we would have something that pedestrians could access, and not a workspace, but...
Yeah.
You know, I mean, that's ideal, but it's not always possible.
It's just a real...
Yeah. Do we want to put any conditions? As we went through, is there anything that, in going through the guidelines and the recommendations that staff made, that we want to address, that we feel that we don't agree with staff on their analysis in terms of the criteria? It starts on staff communication, page four, where staff goes through each issue from the design guidelines and addresses it and the response. When we haven't been unanimous, we've gone through each one, but I don't know that there's anything we need to discuss unless you want to bring something forward.
The one-year limitation is part of the approval process, isn't it, Andrea? It's, that would not be necessarily a condition. You, you've asked for the one-year termination if it's not done in a year, correct?
Yes, that is a condition.
But that's part of the...
That is actually is a condition of approval. So if it's not included there, then it would be...
That doesn't have to be an addition, okay.
So we don't have to include it in the motion, is what you're saying?
If you want it to be one year, you do need to include it as a condition of approval as part of the motion.
Okay, so then, okay, so then we will have to withdraw the motion, or amend the motion, and re, and re second it? Is that correct, Steve? Because we...
Actually, I mean, the approval was in, I believe the resolution was moved, so the approval was in the, I mean, the one-year requirement's in the resolution?
It is in the resolution. It, I, I believe that it wasn't read as part of the motion.
No, it wasn't included as part of the motion, so we...
Then I would, and, Miss...
Do you want us to amend the motion?
An amendment to the motion, including the one-year requirement.
Okay. Okay, so that would be a condition. All right, so do you want to amend the motion, and we'll...
Yes, I'll amend my motion to, my, I guess my one condition would be the one-year, when, what would the date be on that, Andrea, from the date of tonight?
It'd be one year from the date of the certificate of occupancy.
Of COA approval, okay.
Before you do that, do we want to have, require the applicant to notify staff on which way it's going, or do you not care? Do we want to have them let us know how many windows, and if there's any variation?
I, well, before the certificate of occupancy is, is approved by the city, the historic preservation planner, me, will go out and do a, an inspection. And one of the things I will look for is that the window configuration either meets the original option, or the second option.
Okay, and that has to be done within a year from tonight?
Yes.
So you will know at the site visit?
Yes.
Okay. You don't need anything prior to that? All right. Okay. I'm sorry, I just wanted to see if she needed any notification.
Well, that sounds good. I think I'll go with both of your recommendations, then. So recommendation, or condition one would be, "The alternative third win, third-story window design for the west, north, and east elevations must be incorporated into the building permit plans to be consistent with the approval of this COA." Number two, "A note is required to be added to the COA plan set that the alternative window design is approved for a period of one year following the date of COA approval. Upon expiration, the alternative design approval will expire, and the original window design, as approved in COA 17-0001, shall be the required design for the third-story windows for the west, north, and east elevations."
Do we have a second?
I'll amend the second, yeah.
Okay.
Second, except...
All right, we'll go ahead and vote. Okay, the vote is unanimous. So go ahead and carry it, so, thank you. Yes, and you're more than welcome to leave if you want, as we move to our next agenda item. Thank you, everyone. That was a lot to read through this week. So now, we are going to move, before we begin our study session, we have staff comments. Is there anything you want to mention before we adjourn to our study session?
I have nothing for tonight.
Pardon?
Nothing for tonight.
Okay, all right. Why don't we go ahead and adjourn the meeting, and then we will reopen at a study session? We will go ahead and move next door, so we'll take like a five-minute break as we move. Thank you.
The vote simply indicates the board, meaning this board, city council, or owner, may nominate a property area structure for designation as a historic landmark or historic district. Now, this is truly a policy question. I've been in a number of jurisdictions, and I'll use two jurisdictions in Arizona as an example. In the city of Phoenix, they have a very aggressive process, where their historic preservation board actually goes out and solicits, and gets very, very involved in finding properties for nomination. Other cities, the city I worked in, for example, that city council said, "No, we don't want that. What we want is, we want the planning department to do land use planning, identify historic areas, perhaps look at historic overlays, and if they have recommendations, they can submit it to the board." Neither process is right or wrong. It's really, truly a matter of policy. Now, I think if the board wanted to become more aggressive in this, my suggestion would be that you ask staff at a joint work session with the council, to make sure this is incorporated as an item for discussion. And there are many cities where the historic preservation board takes that role. And there are other cities where, for whatever reason, the city may say, "Well, we want the planning department, we want some other entity to sort of be the focus of that." One of the things that probably will be unique to Littleton is, as you may be aware, the city council has recently started what we call a vision-to-plan-to-code process, where what essentially, in a nutshell, the city is looking at all of this work that we've done over the years with various plans and various studies and things, how do we correlate that together, some of it relevant, and then basically coming up with a criteria for a vision that you can measure all of this against. And one of the issues might well be is, how does historic preservation fit within that vision? Is that something, how does, in essence, the city council, ultimately, the community view this aspect as part of the city's overall vision? So my advice as part of this study session is, is that right now, you act basically as a nominating body, but you don't really act right now as sort of what I'd call a go out in the community and bring people in. And that may well be, if you want to move into that direction, something to raise with the council, and say, "Council, we'd like to really see our role modified in that sense." And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question. Sure. So how does that work if we go out and solicit a property to become landmarked, and it comes to us for approval, recommended to the council? Is it a little bit not arms-length? That's what we've, I've been a little concerned about.
And I think the concern is, obviously, well, does the board have a vested interest? When the answer is, no, the fact that you're soliciting, it's much like if we were to have the planning department do that. The idea is, is that who best would understand where historic properties might be located, and who best might understand the historic background? I think we all agree that every property within the two square miles of the center is historic. There are some that are very historic, and there are some that are not so historic. And who would best know that? Frankly, it'd be the planning staff, and it'd be the board, because you've dealt with a number of those properties. And so, when you're doing this, what I call an invitation process, you're not really acting in any capacity, you're not acting in a regulatory capacity, or quasi judicial capacity, you're simply acting as what I would call a, for lack of a better term, a research capacity. You basically have information, you're going out contacting property owners. No, you can't make a property owner come in and seek a designation. All you're really doing is to say, "Listen, we have this process. The staff can certainly work with that property owner and talk about benefits, as we know there are some tax benefits, not quite as many as there used to be, but there are still some tax benefits. Staff can work with that, staff can also work with the property owner if they have other questions." And so I don't think, that the concern is, no one here would be receiving any kind of personal benefit. It's more of just, you happen to have a unique knowledge of the community that you're able to use to perhaps identify, and sometimes, quite honestly, property owners don't realize, or I'll be honest, in the places I've worked, sometimes people have this sort of erroneous view. They think, "Oh, my goodness, if I come in and I get my property designated as a historic landmark, I'll never be able to repair it, I'll never be able to build it. If the roof comes off, I'll never be able to do anything." People sometimes have this idea that, basically, historic preservation means the property is frozen in an icebox forever. That's not the case. But the difficulty is, there are property owners out there who, that's what they think. And so the idea of having their property designated is like, "Oh, no, I don't want to do that." On the other hand, if they actually know the facts, and they know that that's not the case, suddenly they begin to think, "Hmm, this might not be such a bad thing." And that, again, is a role where this board, they want to play, being their information resource, of saying, "Listen, here's things that you ought to consider." And sometimes two people just, again, they're afraid of the process. It's like, "Oh, my goodness, if they consider making my property a historic landmark, it's, I'm gonna have to get a lawyer, it's gonna take a year." The reality of it is, is, again, one of the roles this board could have is be a facilitator of information. No, you really don't need to have a lawyer. And the staff works with citizens every day to help facilitate things like this. And so it really is a policy decision, it's no right or wrong, but certainly, there are way, I don't see a conflict here. It's really a choice of what level of involvement in this sort of investigation and research process does the board want to have. But I do think it's important that that discussion not just occur within the board, but with the city council. Because one of the things is, you don't really want a board like this going this direction. The city council's saying, "Well, no, we really want this done through the planning process, we want the planning department to do studies and things. We don't really want this just being done by the board." So I do think that is a very important component.
Thank you, Steve. That kind of helps us. And one of the things we have in our work plan is to have an awareness of historic buildings, so property owners are aware of the advantages and benefits of preserving their building, and what they can do to help keep it historically, you know, preserve it in some way, fashion. So we've talked about HLI going out to the community. Mike usually goes to the HLI meetings. I went to the one the last time. My sense is that HLI will talk to property owners where they know the person, but in terms of a kind of a mass kind of approach, maybe more of a one-to-many approach, they might rely on events or something, like for awareness of Littleton Corridor, maybe work with staff to get some of their members to come, to get some of the property owners in Littleton Corridor to come and hear about the project in Littleton Corridor project, about preservation, that kind of thing. So that's one of the things we were going to bring up. I don't know if you have any thoughts on that?
With HLI?
With HLI, and how we work with them, and leverage that synergy on what we can and can't do, and what they could help us do.
And certainly, that could be something, again, where staff could also work with the board. I've been involved in cities where staff will put together, like, some handouts, just literature about historic preservation. You think you might want to have your property designated, and it may be just a one-sheet handout that gives citizens some information, and basically tells them contact. Again, most folks who are in government, okay, you know, we call the planning department for this, building safety for this. But if you're just an average citizen, and maybe you have a house or a small business, you sort of sit there and go, "Okay, maybe I might be interested in this, but who do I call? And how do I get information?" And there are ways, again, I think we can assist this board, and this board can work with HLI, basically to say, "Okay, here's some information that you can give out to citizens, that we can help communicate those types of things."
And we do have a one-page, the one I have is not in color, and it does have information on preservation, and it has contacts for the city, it also has the web link. So we could use this. Andrea and I talked about, we have a landmark brochure on how to landmark your property, and maybe, and from what we can see, seeking landmark status, Andrew's gonna double-check, but we don't think we have many of these left. So do we need something special? Is it an add-on to this? Do we just need to provide a link? So those are some options. And I, I had thought maybe a mailing might be appropriate, if staff does have some... And I had thought maybe a mailing might be appropriate if staff does have some sort of event or open house or something, maybe we could have a brochure for that. So these are some of the ideas we thought we would toss around with HLI next week. Thoughts? Does anybody have any other?
I have a couple of thoughts. I think you're absolutely right. The concept of historic designation is kind of scary because it does have, you know, who knows what that means really? And I think that we do have good materials and information for incoming requests when people meet us, I don't know, in fact, in a meet and greet or something like that, where they come to the city and just having a conversation, we're prepared to deal with them and can help them. I think, you know, one potential is outreach. Who does that? Who goes out and basically knocks on the door and says, do you realize this might be a historic property? So, you know, the question is, is that HLI or is that us? And it kind of sounds like it's a HLI.
It could be HLI, it could be this board, it could even be planning staff, I mean, the city, for example, recently, we were talking yesterday with council about some amendments to the cycle. One of the things, we, councilors, we're going to be going out to the local business community, we'll be talking with them about these amendments, and we'll go out to some of the other interest groups. And it may be that this board or the staff and HLI could work together and say, okay, let's go out to these interest groups. Many times like things like the Downtown Chamber, desperately would love to have someone come and speak and say, talk to us about this. And so there are the opportunities like that where the city can reach out and do things like that, where we just provide the information and people take it back and they may, I've had cases where I've been involved with that and somebody will come to a meeting, they're not interested, but they'll tell somebody else, or you know, the city has this program about historic property, the next thing you know, somebody else, by virtue of the city can reach you now. So there are things that, again, under your second amendment, you may want HLI to do, or you may want to say, well, maybe it's HLI and staff, or maybe it's all three of us. This, again, there's no right or wrong answer here, it's really more of the policy that this board and the city in general is comfortable with.
Okay. Thank you. Andrea, you have something?
What I was thinking at the study session last December, when Gail Keely and Rick Cronenberger were here, it seemed that on that topic of discussion, the HP board was maybe more putting it on HLI to do that, and they were maybe a little bit, you know, I think has been said here, willing to knock on doors of people that they have a connection with. And I think as Pam said, you know, there was this feeling that the board should be at arms-length from that kind of activity. But what Steve has said, I think maybe it's open for discussion again, and if you would like to participate more, if there's some sort of consensus about that, then maybe you want to consider asking council to discuss that as part of the agenda with your breakfast meeting in April.
Okay.
So what I'm hearing, I mean, we used to do that, we used to go out and here, we have a list of owners and we'd go contact, and we kind of felt like, we can't do that. I mean, I can't remember why now.
Well, there was two issues. One was contact with property owners in Main Street, which was more us, and then there was contacting property owners in the greater Littleton area from the old list of merit, which became the list of historically and architecturally significant properties, just because it was a list that we had, and that's what we kind of used to kind of look, who should we contact? And that's where HLI said, that's when we kind of pushed it to HLI and maybe it comes back a little bit where it's more of a group effort, and the focus has been on somebody that knows somebody, as opposed to a mass mailing or a vent or going to interest groups. I love that idea, I think that's a great idea.
To clarify as a city council policy, I think what you guys are suggesting is we need to have that conversation with city council because their policy right now doesn't, I wouldn't say forbids us, but maybe dissuades us from being the ones that go out and do recruitment.
Well, and I think you should have the conversation because it is a bit of a policy change. Right now, really the board under the code functions simply as a reviewer of requests, and this is sort of extending that board role. And that is, because this is a creation of the council, before I would extend the board role, I would have that conversation. I mean, if council said, well, no, we have some different policy choices that we think would be more appropriate for the city, you need to know that. But I think that's a, this is a very appropriate conversation to have in terms of talking about how does council feel about the extension of this board's role into doing that.
I think it wasn't so much a policy change, in my opinion, you correct me, Andrea, it was more of a recommendation from the previous attorney.
I thought it was more of a law thing or a...
Yeah, I think it was more, it really wasn't, it was just kind of a recommendation, like you should consider maybe moving arms-length from it.
Not maybe, I'm not really sure of the origins of it.
Yeah, I thought it was more a legal thing.
Because we'll be sitting in front of them and...
Judging.
Right.
Or...
Making decisions based on...
Making decisions.
But what I'm hearing tonight is...
Yeah.
I mean, the key there is, is making sure that there isn't this confusion in roles. When you're functioning in that room, you're functioning as a quasi judicial body, and you're functioning based on the record, nothing else but the record. But your charge under the code is a bit broader than just functioning as this quasi judicial body. So the biggest concern I always have in this is, is that becomes very easy when you're doing quasi judicial, to kind of bring in stuff where that wasn't part of the record. Oh, I met with this property owner a year ago and talked to him, this, this, this we discussed, and suddenly that's coming to the quasi judicial hearing and that's not part of the record. So, I mean, I understand the concerns that Brandon and Ken, Brandon Detman and Ken Bellman have, I have the same concern in the sense of making sure that the roles don't get confused. But I think it's possible to do this without the roles getting confused. It's just, do we need to make sure that we don't confuse our roles? Absolutely. And that's part of what your lawyer is going to do is, is that either Lena or myself, if we begin to see you confusing your roles, we would tell you.
Okay, well, that, no, that's good, that makes sense. Okay, so we, so that's kind of some background on that. At the meeting, so that's the historic awareness thing, and then at the meeting, Rick Cronenberger specifically said, why don't we discuss preservation at kind of a high level between us and them? And specifically, they wanted to address maybe some future surveys. They just wanted to get some input and so, what, oh, and maybe...
Madam Chair, you don't need me, and I'm going to go ahead and excuse myself.
Okay.
I have one question for you.
Sure.
If one of us were to nominate a property to be landmarked, would that person then have to recuse himself or herself at the hearing?
No, because you don't have a personal interest, you certainly could, but you don't have a personal interest that, and now obviously if you had a personal interest, if you were the architect and you nominated it and you figured you were going to get the architectural work, now we have a personal interest. But just merely because, oh, I mean, I will be honest, I love history. I've taught both high school and college history, and everywhere I've lived, I'm very much a history buff. So for me, you know, care of something saying, gee, they ought to be preserving that, I get that. And does that mean that I have a conflict? No. Now, if I happened to be the lawyer during legal work on it, now we have a different issue.
Do we need, Steve, to talk about the process for surveys or is that something you can address, Andrea?
I'm happy to address that.
Okay, so thank you very much, Steve, that was very thoughtful. Thank you.
And next thing you will have Ms. McCullough, it's just that we both had conflicts, so we exchanged meetings.
Okay.
So we'll get later back.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So another thing that was brought up at the HLI meeting for our joint meeting was recommendations on surveys. So Andrea can let us know what the process is. They just wanted to get input, but she wanted us to let us know the process and then she would explain it to them. It's not easy, so Andrea.
Oh, well...
But it takes, you know...
Yeah, I just want to do, to be clear of our different roles. And so from time to time, as you know, the city takes on a project to, for a survey, and all of our surveys have been funded, at least in part, if not in total, by grants from History Colorado, either through CLG Grant or State Historic Fund. And we have written those grants and submitted them, and fortunately, we've usually been successful with those and then we administer them. And in the past, it's generally been a staff function to look through old surveys to see what was recommended by the professionals who did that old surveys, because every survey has a section on recommendations for future survey work that's needed in a community. So we look towards those, and we've also looked for, where's our greatest area of need? And I think that when we worked over in Arapahoe Hills, that came about because there's, it seemed to be a threat and the neighbors were very interested in it. So the ideas for the surveys have generally come from staff and then been thrown out to the board for their thoughts on it. And so Pam has this, you know, great idea in bringing HLI because they have so much knowledge, of course, beyond what we have, and so that to get their ideas too is very helpful. But just to acknowledge that it's pretty much a staff-led project because of the involvement in writing and administering the grants. And we take ideas from the board and we take direction from council ultimately, whether or not to move forward with a grant application or a survey without a grant, if that ever the case.
I don't know, I don't know if we want to run it to another one right away when we still, Littleton Corridor is just barely finished and we still have so much work to do in terms of gaining information and community involvement, where do we go from here? So it's probably not something that's eminent, but they wanted to get input, so I thought that was a good idea. And, you know, something may come up in the future, but, so we're going to share with them. Oh, and that leads into the Littleton Corridor survey, so why don't we talk a little bit about that?
Okay, so Littleton Boulevard Architectural Survey is moving forward and the staff is reviewing the first draft of the context report, and it's pretty good, very interesting. And we anticipate that the final survey will be complete in July of this year. And the staff is already thinking about how to promote it, and we've talked with the consultants, Diane Tomaso and Michael Poglia, about their ideas too. They have some great ideas. There's some groups in Denver that are very big on modern architecture, and when they told them about what's going on on Littleton Boulevard, they're very excited about that, can bring maybe some energy and excitement around with being able to talk about that. We've talked about meeting with property owners, sending out surveys when they're complete to different property owners to have them have that information and opportunity to talk with us about designation or anything else. So we thought that also HLI has always had a big interest in modern architecture. I remember the first year I came, there was a big dinner to honor Eugene Sternberg, and that was, that was really great. And so it would be great to hear their ideas too, for helping to promote it. And I would also like to add that there have been two outreach events for this project. The first was done by the city, we got very few people. The second one, just recently, a month ago, was put out by HLI, and there were, what, 90 people there. So that's a big, you know, if they're able to pull in a lot of people, that's really advantageous.
And also help out at the events, you know, provide cookies and people to check people in and all sorts of other stuff. So I think it's all, the synergy would be good. But we wanted to let them know it's a staff-led project, and I think we need to reiterate to them when we go to the meetings that we don't want them to go have an event or something sort of independent, like to coordinate with the city. So, you know, they can, they're not getting direction from the consultants from the city and then from HLI and, you know, HPP, so we just make sure we're all in sync.
You know, Andrea, I attended that first session in the council chambers when we were hoping that building owners would show up, and I think there may have been one or two, and I don't know how many showed up at Bemis for the most recent event, but has there been much interest from building owners relative to the survey?
Well, Diane and Michael have been out there on the street a little bit more and have made some contacts with maybe a handful of property owners, some of whom are interested in learning more about designation. And what we saw at the Bemis event was, there really truly were 90 people there.
Yes.
A little surprise, in a very good way, and there were some more property owners that showed up there, and they were taking an interest in that and had some information to offer about their buildings. And so our consultants made their numbers available and I saw them, I overheard them saying, you know, just call us with more information, if you have historic photographs and whatnot, we'd love to see it all.
How does this year's survey compare with the 2001 survey? What's the difference between those two?
Yes, so the 2001 survey surveyed a lot of properties, and there wasn't a lot of information on each individual property. You got information like, what's the historic name, and they would give the historic name to the property, maybe based on the first owner or the first business, and the year that it was constructed, the architectural style, some historical information such as, what were the various businesses that occupied this building? And then there was sort of a brief assessment of how much historic and significance and how much integrity did the building have, and would it be eligible for national or possibly local designation? And it was from that survey, by the way, that the board at that time used to create the list of merit, which we no longer have, but that's, that's how that was originally created, based out of that survey. The current survey is all along Littleton Boulevard and includes some buildings that were not surveyed previously, but it's a smaller geographic area, so overall, smaller number of survey forms. And the information that we're getting is going to be much more in-depth than what we've seen before. Very interesting, very well researched, many hours spent over at the Littleton Museum or the, yeah, the museum and elsewhere to get the info.
That's great, thank you.
So if you go to those meetings, I as your backup will just kind of reiterate that.
Another thing that we had talked about working on with HLI was, oh, did you? Well, I just have one question about the survey, and that is, the survey is very cool and it's using a lot of oh-wows about Littleton Boulevard, but I'd like to just make sure that we're actually using this for economic development, because it can spur a lot of ideas for economic development along that corridor, which needs it, quite frankly. And I just want to make sure that Economic Development Department within the city will be involved in what can we do with this, basically, how can we monetize this? So that's really important. I'd like to see that as one of the next steps.
Is staff going to have a plan? Like a document?
Yes, there'd be a document, and there are two pieces to it. The first is historic context, it's largely text and with pictures, and so you can read about the history sort of on a citywide scale, you know, what happened in Littleton, we started out as a small town, and then after World War II, you know, it became a bedroom community and headquarters moved in, that kind of thing. And then the second document is going to be the surveys themselves that you flip through, property by property, and read the history on them. And of course, it'll be online, it'll be in the museum, in the research area, it'll be at the library, and talk about anywhere else that maybe there's a need for hard copies.
Will it be online?
Well, not until it is complete in July.
Sometime in the summer.
Yeah, yeah. Oh, Kim, I want to, I, you may not know, the Economic Development Department does have grant money available to assist building owners with upgrading their buildings. And we have already, as a result of this survey, we have one property owner purchase a building on Main Street on... a building on Main Street on Littleton Boulevard, 1150 West Main, and he wasn't really aware of the fact that he had a pretty great building in terms of its architectural history and significance. And he applied for a building permit to put in some windows, and when we took a look at that, we thought, you know, maybe there could be a better design to honor the building better. And so, we worked with him to make some suggestions about architects who are familiar with this style of architecture, gave a list, and he was able to get a grant from Economic Development to get the design assistance from an architect.
That's good.
So, that's currently in process, so we can't have a complete yet.
This could really just spur some ideas and just use it as that little impetus.
It's a great point, Kim. And, you know, one of my takeaways from that meeting at Bemis was how important signage was in the olden days along Littleton Boulevard. Is that being incorporated into this recommendation at all? And I heard something about changing the sign code with Steve, was he, when you talked a little earlier?
Yes, well, yes, Steve is, that will be going up to council actually fairly soon, the sign code, but we haven't addressed in that code bringing back the big signs of-
The neon signs or-
No, no.
It seemed like they were an extension of the building's personality in many cases, and it really was what made Littleton Boulevard sort of light up, if you will.
Yes, yeah. And who's that big woodchuck person of folklore?
Paul Bunyan.
Yeah, I don't know if you know, there was a huge Paul Bunyan sign over at the log cabin over at Hudson Gardens there.
Oh, really?
And the city made a sweep and said, look, we don't want any of these big signs anymore. And the property owners had three years to take them down.
Was Babe the Blue Ox there too?
I'm not sure.
I think on the Essex House Motel, there was a pretty cool sci-fi looking sign apparently back in the day.
I saw the Merle sign, looked nice, the one on the sidewalk.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's kind of, not Merle, it's the Grand Station.
Grand Station, yes.
And have you seen on the side of the building, they have historic pictures of when it was a gas station?
Oh, cool.
Yeah, just go around the side of the building, and there's these huge pictures of when it was a gas station.
Grand Station is the new name, the restaurant, the new restaurant in what was Delizio's a few years back.
Anything else? The other thing we were working on with HLI was the plaques or the signs, and for those of you that maybe don't remember, we looked at the plaques, and we wanted to get more plaques. Well, Andrew and I walked down Main Street and realized that all the landmark buildings had plaques pretty much, and we didn't need a plaque on every building. So, we kind of think, maybe the plaques aren't the best idea, but maybe we should look at a sign like at Bigga Park, talking about downtown Littleton and its history, and that HLI would be perfect to write copy for that. The problem is, they're expensive, but Dan, you had something new on that.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, let's talk about that a little bit.
You're the sign guy?
I'm the sign guy.
Yeah, he's kind of researching it.
Dan's now the sign guy.
There's two sides here. Here, I'll go get a hold of that on the other side. So, yeah, Matt Frye is the local headstone guy in downtown Littleton. They do other things other than just cemetery headstones. They do, they can set us up with bronze plaques and whatnot. So, really, I talked to him, just kind of threw out two options to him and tried to understand the cost. Option one, you see there is, you know, I sent him the picture of the upper right of that sample that says Dickinson College, and that's a cast relief bronze plaque. You know, when Pam was talking about maybe, or maybe it's, Andrew, you're talking about putting it in Bigga Park, you know, there's some, there's already some bronze statue and some other sort of information there that maybe bronze just seemed like a good fit for that area. So, the top left image would be, you know, do you have some sort of limestone mast with, and I just said, two of these cast bronze plaques. The cast bronze plaques cost 1,400 bucks each, all right, so.
Does that include the stand, like you have up here?
That would, does not include the stand, but we'll find out more. But my task really was just to understand kind of how much these plaques were.
Right, right.
So, cast bronze, you'd have some relief. This is just, you know, like you said, whatever the artwork or whatever type that HLI wants to do, it's just, you know, 18 by 18, some art, some text, 1,400 bucks. And then on the other side is another way that you can do a direct print onto metal, I'm not sure that it's bronze. There's a sample, I sent Matt the sample in the upper right, which is a map, Longmont, Colorado, they have. So, 24 by 36 sign is, what did I say, 800 bucks, so it's quite a bit less. The idea here would be, you know, this sign could be, you know, placed on some other sort of substrate, and I know the city just went through a whole process of getting new signage, and so, I'm not saying that it would need to look exactly like that signage, but maybe there's some consistency with whatever that substrate is that this 24 by 36 inch sign could be mounted on, would be mounted on something that's consistent with what else is downtown. And there's, I think Pam found this image on the bottom right, which is in Central City, that was like a similar process.
And that's about the same price, I think?
That, I don't have that information, but those look like 24 by, you know, roughly 24 by 36 or 30 by 42 boards. So, I mean, if you go, like the ones probably down at Central City, I'm just going to, I'd say, you know, maybe they're a thousand bucks a piece or something like that.
For each one of those, you think?
Yeah, if one 24 by 36 is 800, I'm going to bump up the price because it's a little bigger sign.
And maybe we wouldn't have to go with metal, we could go with something, something over.
Well, I'm just being an advocate for quality, because those did matter.
Durability.
Yeah, durability and-
They also did these on glass.
They do. And actually, to be honest with you, I know, I know some of the signage that is downtown, where we do have some information in front of Fine Arts, you know, Fine Arts Hall, so I'd be curious, it would be fun to talk to those guys too, just to see what, you know, can we dial it back, make it a little bit more historic, but what is the process if you're using it and just sort of have a-
This is kind of absurd, you know, I was thinking it was $5,000.
That's right, when I emailed them, I was like, hey, is this 18 by 18 cash relief? Is that like 10,000 bucks? They're like, no, it's like 40, so.
And maybe if we got that, that all we need is one application, what's that application for?
One tax credit.
One tax credit.
Well, it depends on the amount of tax credit that they can claim, on how much we take for. It would range from 250 to 750 dollars per application.
So, if we did get that, that goes directly to us, so that might be some funds. I keep wanting HLI to kind of chip in some money.
Let's just say that HLI is sort of-
Yeah, kick in.
Co.
Yeah.
So, um-
Bring some to the party.
So, here are my thoughts that hopefully, maybe HLI will also be interested in the project, and this is, you know, something like this is great then to bring to city council to kind of get their input and, I guess, approval if, to move forward on it, on some ideas about, you know, how to raise the money. There's a tax credit, there's HLI, and who knows, maybe even city council would want to allocate money for the project. But it will take a city council vote to actually begin moving forward on it.
So, does that mean we have to include it on our agenda for our little breakfast meeting that's two minutes long?
That's an option, if you would like to do it, you know, this year as opposed to next year, or whenever your next breakfast meeting is.
Well, it might be worthwhile to at least get an opinion and see if they would vote for it if we, and we would, what would we do if we wanted them to vote on it? Would we have to bring a formal resolution?
Well, we could look into exactly what the process is at a breakfast meeting. There won't, there wouldn't be a vote, but we could get some direction from them and see what their level of interest is.
Yeah, we shouldn't ask them to make any decisions about, we want to have this plaque right here with this verbiage on it at breakfast. We wouldn't do that, but I mean-
Would they be willing to budget a thousand bucks or 1,200 or 1,500?
If they would basically, you know, be willing to fund us basically to do this and proceed with it. Just a couple of points on it. I think that it would be exciting to kind of activate Bigga Park a little bit with, you know, this kind of signage, if it was a little bit more interactive, you know, like not interactive, but, you know, just going and looking and reading different things could be kind of cool. Also, we have to remember that downtown, I'm looking at this Dickinson's College, which is really a cool plaque, but downtown is certainly not static. It's changing, obviously, every day, just a little bit. So, we'd want to do something that is a little bit more changeable, and, you know, why not think about QR codes? Go into the next, you know, instead of bronze, the 19th century technology, maybe think about-
We walked historic Durham, North Carolina, and it was the QR codes, and you get the information.
And you could have, you know, Littleton Notables, you know, saying, you know, reading a little blurb about the building that they're looking at with the QR code. I mean, that could be a fun way to do it.
You have the analog plaque, which is for, you know, if we enjoy looking at, you can have the, you know, the modern millennial plaque, which is a QR-
Exactly, QR code. So, that's cool. And it's also, just as an aside, looking at this, these wonderful plaques and this Central City stuff, which is inviting, stand there and read it, and I would stand and read the whole thing. And then I look at the sign for Bigga Park, which is certainly a wonderful sign.
Orient you right away, I mean, the way that your-
But it's a door sign.
Yeah, it just kind of lets you know.
Yeah, it would be nice to replace that with something a little bit more inviting. So, anyway.
Now-
Talk to our Australian neighbors.
Yeah.
There you go.
How many are planning on coming? It's a six o'clock dinner, a little bit social, you know, maybe you can talk to some from HLI, and then we have our study session from 6:30 to, HLI recommended we go an hour and a half maximum.
So, when is that?
It is a week from today.
Okay, so that's not the city council breakfast, obviously.
No, no, no.
Yes, I'm planning on it.
Hey, are you?
I will have to look again.
Are you going to make it?
When is it again?
Next Wednesday at 6 o'clock, starting six, without the sandwich for dinner in the meeting.
Six o'clock to seven.
Sandwich is at six.
And discussion begins for, yeah, formal discussion is at 6:30.
I'll be here. Can you send out a reminder email, would you mind, to the whole?
Yeah, so, this afternoon, actually, you have a packet for that, and it was emailed today.
Oh, okay, I missed it. Okay, so, and that went to them. And then if you would bring your name tag, you know, your Littleton name tag, so as people introduce themselves.
I was so good. I wore my name tag every day at Savings Places.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, how was it? That's one thing-
It was really good, it was really good.
Did you have any takeaways that were ironies?
Tons of takeaways on all kinds of things that we could do with the Littleton Corridor Survey. The word alley was not uttered during the entire three or four days.
Ah, interesting.
So, I have nothing on it.
Did you make any contacts to do any tour swaps or anything?
No.
Do you want to bring up those ideas? Do you want to put up a memo or just bring it out next week?
Oh, no, we can talk about it later.
Okay. Yeah, anything that you want to do, like if, just let us know on the agenda, if there's something that you want to add or presentation.
I talked at length about lots of stuff, about mostly Littleton Boulevard Survey and capitalizing on that.
Okay, good, 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 good. Anything else anybody wants to chat about? I think we're good, I think we went through everything, didn't we?
I think so.
And really, something-
In shape for next week's?
Yeah, next week, and then, yeah, we'll just go from there. And the only other thing that's going on, and Margie will speak to it next week, is the person that headed up the Friday night art walk is no longer going to have a gallery in downtown Littleton.
And Suti Floyd not doing that anymore?
No, she's closing like next month.
She's closing outnumbered?
Yeah.
Is it going to be vacant?
I don't know. So, we don't know how, if somebody's going to take it over, but she was really spearheaded this. So, we don't know if somebody's going to take it over, if it's going to be an art walk, if it's going to be First Friday, and how that impacts the tours. And remember, we asked HLI to be the lead on the tours, that our involvement would be to provide tour guides if people wanted to get involved. And I'm sure people would still want you as a tour guide, Dan, even if you're not on our board, because you're a very good tour guide. And we've done tours for things like Leadership Littleton, or what's it called, is that? Yeah, Leadership Littleton, RTD. There's a history camp coming this summer where we might want to offer tours. So, it's not like they'll go by the wayside, and we'll still do Western Welcome tours, but because we had a Memory Friday, we didn't have the tons of people we did before. And hopefully, if we do continue the tours, they will get microphones with us. So, let's go ahead and adjourn-
Oh, and Margie found a really inexpensive microphone solution.
Wonderful. We only need two or three, I mean, there's not that many tours at the same time, it's just the expense.
She found something that was really cool at Savings Places. She got that idea, so we'll have to talk to her.
Oh, how much was it that she made?
It was really inexpensive.
At least less than 100 bucks? Okay.
But we could talk to her at the HLI.
Okay, at the meeting next week.
And Dan, just shout out to you for just becoming a sign expert. You can put this on your resume, this is great. And also, great to involve this local businessman who obviously does more than the tombstones. I mean, that's really cool, that's great.
I think it's been a great thing that we go to Hoodlum, Mike's go, next week. Joelyne couldn't go last time, and it was too hard to get somebody, but like I said, the time I went, we stocked about historic preservation for a good chunk in the meeting, which was kind of cool. Okay, let's go ahead and adjourn our meeting. Thank you very much for coming, and for those of you who can make it next week, we'll see you next Wednesday night at 6 o'clock.